Oh.
A male cracker.
And a, and a what?
Okay. Is there a crack or barrel that's in?
Yeah, total of not.
Who is it?
There's only one.
What, I just don't, a guy.
You're trying to get one way from the house?
Yeah.
There was.
You don't want to put a car on on the front.
I get it, I get it.
One more cherry pull.
He is a guy.
We gotta get him to sort of, but it's not, it's not her foot.
All four hundred.
No.
I hope my side look looks like it.
Or you have her.
The church is visiting.
But nobody.
It's kind of, your, the parking lot is bad.
Well, no.
Oh, it's, oh, it's.
You and I would be thrilled because we're doing that.
You always could see people.
Can't see that.
Somehow.
What?
Typical.
You know, it's about the big ask. You don't even know if it's me. Thing can't even fit over your nose.
Seems like it's over the mouth.
That's up to you to decide about it.
Hey, who? Drella, you told us.
I call the November sixteenth, twenty twenty, Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to Order. The clerk will call a roll.
Arivolo?
President.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee? McGee is going to be absent. Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you so much. If you'd please stand and pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's right in front of me. No honor, I couldn't find it. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your magnificent gifts. We ask for your presence and guidance tonight as our city council convenes to do the work of our beloved Belvidere community. Today's world is fraught with crime, dishonesty, selfishness, and lack of faith, whipped into a frenzy by political extremists and by media to serve dubious agendas. Even our respectful community feels the pressures of discontent, uncertainty, and fear engendered by those who had served dark masters. As we work together this evening, let us remember that unity and respect for one another will set a standard for the community we jointly serve. We are all diminished by that which injures any one of us. Help us to make sound decisions that benefit all of our citizens promoting harmony, happiness, and safety for all those who call Belvidere home. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen. Okay, under public comment, we have nobody this evening. Just kidding. First, first we have Tom Porter, who will speak to us via phone. Tom, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything formally made up here or anything. I just wanted to mention that I think, you know, the COVID situation in Boone County is like at thirty percent now, you know, highest, highest in the state, and I feel that's kind of embarrassing, actually. And I think that we need to start having some conversations about enforcement on the rules, especially the mask rules. I've noticed, well, some of the organizations around town here, like a major food chain that I was in this weekend, are not enforcing their mask rule even with their employees. And I think we need to start taking some steps here to help get this under control in our county and doing what we can and maybe need to have some conversation at the city council meetings on the subject or whatever we need to do to try to help get this under control. And that's about all I have to say. Thanks.
You're welcome. And there will be an item in your packets for next week. There was a, a press release letter that was put out by the IML today that took the governor to task. The issue is, it's the governor's responsibility and the health department's responsibility and the state police's responsibility and to enforce the rules of, that are handed down by COVID. And the issue therein lies, and I'll speak first to the twenty-nine percent plus, all of the testing that's been done the past couple of weeks has been done primarily at the nursing homes. We have breakouts in all of our senior facilities, and obviously, that's a huge problem, and we have, we have five or six cases at Shadley. I don't have them by, I checked for Shadley, I'm not sure of the, the amounts. And that will, with the number of tests performed, our COVID tracing has gotten to a point where it's very accurate, and so when someone gets tested positive, the COVID tracing takes over and they get to the people who they were around very quickly, and they're going to test positive. There's no doubt about it. It's out of control. And it comes down to this, the statistical analysis, when it's broken down by where it's coming from, the last I knew was still indicating community spread, which means privacy, private parties, people getting together, people not wearing masks, people not washing their hands. It's not evident that it's coming from the restaurants or the bars. If you go into some of our restaurants, you see they have the tables spread, people are wearing masks, the help is wearing masks. In our bars, it's a little different. After the first drink, the masks come off, and the only one wearing a mask seems to be the bartender. But I would agree with you that we can't selectively enforce. If we're going to have gaming parlors open, how does that make sense? That that's okay? I'll tell you how it makes sense because it's revenue. It's tax revenue. Restaurants themselves don't seem to be the issue. So, you know, it's a mixed bag, and at this point in time, there has to be a national effort to rein this thing in, and state by state, the governors need to stand up or either change how we can enforce this. You all know that we, our police officers and our sheriffs are not charged to do this enforcement. We made them available if, if the health department folks are meeting some kind of obnoxious resistance or feel unsafe when they're talking to people. The state police were here last, last week. They wrote citations for restaurants here. They wrote citations for restaurants in Rockford. And after talking to some of the Rockford folks, it's cheaper to pay the fine than it is to close the doors. So, we have to have a common sense approach to this. What IDPH has asked for is that everybody stay home for three weeks. You know, you don't have to go out to eat, you don't have to go to the bar. Try to take a chance of where we were, let's say, March, when it became a serious thing, and everybody paid attention, and everybody tried to do what was right, and we got a better handle on this. I, I look at it this way. I would love to go out to eat, but I haven't been out to eat since August, one time in August. And the reality is, we spend time at home, we spend time in our pod. When we are looking at Thanksgiving, the family's broken up at different places, and everybody's staying in their own pod. I mean, we usually have, you know, like twenty people, and we can't, we can't do that now. It's just, it, it doesn't work well, and when your grandkids, your grown children, your grandkids, and your great grandkids are all in different households and in different preschools and in different environments, and they come into your environment, you don't know who's got what. So, you know, I think we all have to take a deep breath and say, what can I do personally to help this? And it's the simple things. I know everybody washes their hands more than they did. I know that everybody tries to wear masks when they're out in public, and I know people try to socially distance when they can. But I think if we all try to do a better job at that and set an example for the community, maybe that will help, but it may be too late. We're, we're coming up on Thanksgiving and Christmas, and they think this thing is just going to keep rolling and rolling and rolling. So, I just, I feel bad about that, and yes, it bothers me that we have the highest rate in, in the, in the state, but we are also very aggressively testing lately, and we, we have also worked our COVID tracing thing, it's a little science now. They get on top of that right away. So, yes, ma'am.
When, when people have to have multiple tests, doesn't that show also more tests that it shows more people have it when they're, they're actually more case, or more, more testing than people?
If they test positive, they test positive. You can be tested several.
But if they have four or five tests until they can get a negative, it's still showing up as more cases.
Well, it showed, it's shown up as tested for the virus, which does show up, but it, if they don't test positive, it doesn't enter it as an active case. If you look on what the, the health department puts out, they have active cases and recovered cases, and it used to be less than a hundred person swing for months. And then last week, we had three deaths, and now we have a five-hundred-person swing between active cases and recovered cases. And that's really hard to judge, too, because if a child is in a daycare or in one of the schools that is, is in school, and, and they start sneezing, they get sent home to quarantine. And so, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult. But I still think it comes down to everybody having the consideration for other people, and it drives you nuts when you, you know, you go, there are certain stores, grocery stores and such, I don't go into anymore. I'll go to Woodman's, because in Woodman's, they will escort you out if you do not have a mask on, and they are not fooling around about it. There's a big gal there that will take you by the arm and push, take you right out the door. I've seen it happen, so. I would just ask everybody to try to set an example for your family, for the rest of the community, and let's try to figure this thing out. Our businesses have to find a way to survive, and so we're not going to go around and nail the businesses shut. That's not it. But what, I understand, first, there's a warning, and then there's a warning, and then there's a fine, and then they're looking at pulling people's liquor licenses and food licenses. So, we have a little leeway if we want to try to exercise it, I think, because we're home rule, that, and, and that's, I've got a question in now to the IML about how much leeway that gives us to form our own rules about how we want to enforce. So, we'll see. But we're in trouble, no doubt about it. I got a call today. Chief can verify it, that someone had reached out about, is there a space in a building for COVID cases to quarantine because hospitals are full? And that's a serious thing. Okay. So, sorry to talk about things that are unpleasant to talk about, but that's part of our work is to do that. Next up, we have Mr. Russell Caldwell that would like to speak to us. Mr. Caldwell, you have the floor.
Under the topic of having the businesses survive, I, I can, I would like the city council to look at fireboxes allowing to have gaming machines. My, going back to businesses surviving, restaurants in Belvidere are not doing well. And you, the original purpose of the gaming machines was for the restaurants and bars that were not needing cash flow to have some assistance. Well, you have one that needs assistance. Now, in our particular circumstance, we have filed all the papers to get the gaming licenses in, and I understand that it'll be early next year before all of the paperwork and all of the zoning, special use will be in through the city. However, the city does have a cap on gaming licenses. To that, to that point, what I'd like the city council to look at is, I currently have a gaming license zoning approval for iron and coal, and it was, came to the city council, voted on the city council, and approved prior to the cap being enacted. What I would like the city council to do is to discuss the fact of that one was in, in process before the cap. It is a current zoning application right now. The city council has always approved it to continue. City council also knows that particular piece of property has been cursed for some kind of new construction and anything that we've tried to do up to this point, but we would like to use and have it approved, not with the, in lieu of the cap, for firebox. And that's what we would like you guys to, to look at. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Russ. Well, so ends public comment. Next up, under number four, we have approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting, Belvidere City Council, November second, twenty twenty, as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry may have second.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, and minutes are approved unanimously. Under special messages and proclamations, I have a proclamation that I'll read into the record. I don't think we have anybody here to accept it this evening. It's a proclamation for National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Proclamation, whereas hundreds of individuals in Boone County, many of them children and families, experience homelessness each year, and whereas about six thousand people in Boone County are living in poverty with many of them having to use the services of a local food pantry or soup kitchen, and whereas the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness are sponsoring National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and whereas the purpose of the awareness campaign is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for the very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless through the efforts of the Rock River Homeless Coalition, and whereas the city of Belvidere recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in our community, now therefore I, Michael Chamberlain, as mayor of Belvidere, do hereby proclaim November fifteenth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty, to be National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Belvidere, Illinois, and encourage all residents to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, public, non, nonprofit service entities. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affixed the seal of the city of Belvidere the sixteenth day of November twenty twenty. Michael Chamberlain, mayor of the city of Belvidere. It is a problem, but the good news is, we do not currently have food insecurity of any magnitude in Belvidere Boone County due to the distribution of meals through funding by FCA, through funding by numerous grants in the community. The homeless issue, we've served over seventy thousand meals since COVID started. So, you know, the why has been instrumental in that, and there are additional grants that were just received to extend that, that programming. And as far as the homelessness, we really don't have anybody that we're aware of that is living in their car or living in the woods. We have a couple of guys who really don't like to be inside that we see outside a lot. Now that the weather's getting colder, they'll be seeking shelter inside. From time to time, we have periodic homelessness when someone is, is kicked out of their apartment or their home, and before they understand how to work their way through the social service system to find hope and aid. So, we try to do a really good job to make sure nobody falls through the cracks. So, if any of you are aware of people who have food insecurity, particularly families with children, or those who are seeking shelter and can't find a regular shelter, someone who's homeless may be couch surfing from one friend's house to another friend's house, or spending a few nights to get paid for by the township in, in a hotel or something. But those folks that are, just really don't have a place to live, if we can identify them, we can find them placement. There are assets out there through the community that can help them find placement. So, let me know if you know of folks like that. Up next, Pam Lopez-Fetis will give us an update on growth dimensions. Pam, are you on the line?
I am.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Well, it seems like it was just too long ago that we started talking about the venture program, which is the entrepreneurial ecosystem for Boone County, to connect our businesses, existing and aspiring businesses with resources. And we received some, or the city received some seed money in order to start some cohorts for a fast-track training, and this training will be completed this week. We have had ten people that have participated in training, six we believe that will be completed before the, by the end of this week, and so we'll have a graduation on Saturday. We also met with trainers to discuss opportunities for improvement for next year. Part of those improvements or resources that we want to provide is through a, another program that the Kaufman Foundation supports called Source Link. We will have the opportunity to apply for some resources in order to help pay for this program after the seventh of December, and this will be able to help us outline what are the gaps in our resources available to businesses and how can we connect with some additional resources. So, we'll be working with the city and trying to pursue basically some more resources available for our region. We're also working with some of our regional partners out, you know, in the Rockford area and Freeport area to develop a program called Innovate and Create, which is going to be a podcast for entrepreneurs and innovative companies. So, we'll be able to provide some of those resources and tell stories on how other people were able to do this. We intend to have our first podcast before the end of this calendar year, and then start next year with a series of podcasts focusing on, you know, human resource ideas, marketing, financial support, as well as other topics. We're also, worked, had worked on a project for a site selector project for a business from Germany that had visited the city of Belvidere and met with us. Unfortunately, they had not selected Boone County to move forward with, however, at the same time, they haven't eliminated Boone County either, so we're hoping that they may consider us in the future date. We're also working with a project focused on entertainment industry, and they're seeking some acreage in order to provide those, that type of a venue, and presently, they're negotiating with some landowners. So, we'll hopefully hear something soon. And the last thing I wanted to share with some marketing that we're trying to provide is, you know, being in Belvidere and Boone County won't want to stand out in how we showcase ourselves to not only other companies throughout the US, but maybe companies outside the US. So, we're going to be adding some pages to the website to include some information on foreign direct investment. So, we've met with some international partners such as Select USA Investment Specialists, the US Commercial Services for International Business Support, and the Small Business Development Center for International Trade Network, to outline some of the resources that are available for businesses and provide some support and guidance to not only businesses in our area, but to attract businesses to our area. And we've also had a, working with a company called Neon Cloud Productions to provide a video and social media clips to market Boone County, our logistical advantage as well as our quality of life. So, they were onsite filming on Friday, October twenty-second, and we hope to have a finished product by the end of this calendar year, probably in mid-December. Didn't know if there was any questions.
Any questions for Pamela? Okay. Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
Under item C, Attorney Drella will preface exactly why there's, this is worded as an announcement of estimated tax levy for tax year twenty twenty. I sent out an email to all of the, Becky and I sent out an email to all of the Alderman to kind of fill you in on this. It's not, and, and it has been the thought that due to the COVID crisis, that the city administration is, is not real keen on asking the council to approve a levy increase this year. We would like you to entertain that thought for the library because they're still in dire straits as they were, but we wanted to bring this to, to council to, when it's appropriate, to get how you guys feel about that. So, I'll have Attorney Drella talk to us about, this is not a vote on the tax levy, this is the announcement of the estimated tax levy as required by law. Alderman, excuse me, Attorney Drella?
The mayor's still my thunder.
Sorry.
This is pretty much exactly what I was going to say. So, what's before you this evening is not approving the tax levy. In fact, has nothing really to do with approving the tax levy. Back in nineteen ninety-four, Illinois adopted the Truth in Taxation Act, which does many things, supposed, it's supposed to do is make the adoption of levies and taxes transparent for the general public. My mind actually confuses everybody, but that's beside the point. Illinois got it wrong again. The Truth in Taxation Act, part of it requires the corporate authorities of all the local governments in the state of Illinois to announce an estimate of what they think they might adopt as a tax levy, and that estimate has to be approved by the corporate authorities at least twenty days prior to the actual adoption of a tax levy ordinance. So, all this is, is approving what we think the estimate might be, and then you actually approve the levy when it comes up for you in ordinance form in approximately twenty days. What's important to note is, whatever the estimate that you approve tonight is, you can raise it, you can lower it, you can keep it flat, whatever the corporate authorities thinks is appropriate in twenty days' time. So, you do tonight does not affect what you do when you adopt the tax levy ordinance. This is simply an announcement of what we think the estimate might be. The only time it affects us is if you do a significant increase over your estimate. There's a couple of hoops you might have to jump through, but that's not likely to happen, so. The recommendation, once the finance director goes over, it would be a motion to approve the estimate of the announce, the announcement, the estimated tax levy in the amount that the corporate authorities wishes to estimate, and that simply allows us to actually do the tax levy ordinance in twenty days at whatever levy amount the corporate authorities thinks appropriate then. Are there any questions with what I said? I was a little bit wordy. Okay.
Mr. Tobin, would you take the floor, please?
So, what you have before you and the numbers that you see before you requesting the five million, one hundred nine thousand, six nineteen with the additional seven hundred forty-four thousand, five twenty-five, these numbers come about using the same formula that we do every year, as if we were under tax caps. We've always done that, even though you're home rule and you're able to adjust your levy as you see fit. We have continued to adjust it as if you were under tax caps. So, the amount of the increase, if you were to approve the increase, would be a hundred, as it says in my memo dated today, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six eighty-five for the city and an additional eighteen thousand, three hundred and one dollars for the library. So, just to move this process forward, and I know, you know, we've had discussions with this in the past, I had asked the mayor for some recommendations tonight, and, you know, over the next week or two, as I prepare the ordinance for the levy. It's just, it's a lot of work to prepare those ordinances. In the last two years, I've had to go back and rewrite those ordinances in the eleventh hour. So, you know, if we can come up with a consensus as to whether to, to increase the levy or to leave the levy status quo, that would be very helpful to me in writing those ordinances.
And Mr. Mayor, this is Mike again. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to intercede because the finance director mentioned both the city portion of levy as well as the library portion of levy. And we obviously had quite a big discussion about the library last year. Something that I should have brought out last year, and frankly, it just, I was just too busy listening to everybody debate it, and the good points are being made. The Library Act, the local library act, makes the, in this case, the Belvedere Library and others like it, they're actually their own entity. The mayor appoints the directors of the library, the board of the library, with the advice and the consent of the city council, and once that happens, they pretty much are self-governing. Their act, and it's within the library act, provides that, their board is to present their requested levy to the corporate authorities of the city, and then says the city shall levy the amount of the taxes requested by the board, and doesn't provide wiggle room for the city to lower or increase it. It says the city shall levy that amount. There's no case law on it, but I want to make you sure that you're aware that the way the statute is written, it requires the city to levy what the library asks for.
Alderman Burt.
So I'm confused on that, Attorney Drela, because we didn't give them what they asked for last year, so now you're saying we have to do whatever they say?
I'm telling you what the statute says. It says the city shall levy the taxes requested by the board.
They actually, you did vote to approve the increase in their levy last year, but not the city's levy. So the board, so the library did get their increase last year. And something you have to remember there is they're running into issues because of the prevailing wage continuing to go up every year, so they're playing catch-up with all their employees every single year, trying to figure that out, so that's been their difficult issue.
Additional questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Marcia.
So last year, we had multiple, multiple meetings with multiple library representatives lobbying for their increase. I'm confused as to what was the point of that if we have to give them whatever they ask for? And in that regard, you know, they could come to us and say, "We need $50,000," and we would have to approve that?
What I'm telling you is what the, what I'm telling you is what the statute says, and it uses the word "shall." It doesn't use "may," doesn't use any other word. I'm also telling you that there's absolutely no case law on points regarding that statute. So I don't know how a court would interpret it. Generally, courts interpret "shall" to mean mandatory, which makes common sense.
We kind of took the law in our own hands, in other words. And we did grant them their request because it was a reasonable request. But I was not aware that the exact language had that, could have that impact, and because there's no case law on it, I think we still work through it. And if they come with a request that's not reasonable, or that is not affordable for the city to grant, that we take the best course of action, understanding what their need is. Additional questions or comments before we move this forward? Hearing not all, yes?
You have another question, I guess?
Sure.
Director Tobin just mentioned an increase. An increase in the, in the tax levy for the city, but I thought I received two emails saying we didn't want an increase.
It was after discussion, we're not presenting it the same way that we presented it last year. And the reason being for what Becky explained, we went around and around and around, and she had to rewrite all of the stuff. So we just, you know, this estimated tax, she's presenting what we would like to have, and we're looking for your direction as a council on how you feel about that. And because of COVID, and because we have been blessed in one way because we got a little money from the state, the money isn't as essential, although you keep falling, as we stressed last year, you keep falling further behind. In other words, if it's two bucks and we ask for a buck, that becomes three bucks, and next year you ask for a buck, that's four bucks. And so it has an accumulative effect, and every year that we do not approve an increase in the levy, we have to make up the difference in that with increased revenue just to meet our budget to stay where we were, because of the increase in cost of doing things. So it's kind of a shell game to say, okay, we need X amount of revenue each year to keep everything, all the motors running and everything happening in the city. And we do a good job of that, and we have a balanced budget every year, and we don't exceed, and we save money for our big projects. COVID's kind of kicked the pants out of a lot of different things, and so the administration wants to be forward. If you don't think that you're going to be in favor of approving $140,000 increase in the levy, then we'd like to know as soon as possible, so Becky doesn't have to go back and rework all of the figures, because that's hours and hours of work every time that she has to do it. And so that was something we wanted to have a discussion with you, and get your good offices and your advice on. Yes, Alderman Frank?
I just want to know, how does this affect our taxpayers in Belvedere during COVID-19 that are having a hard time? What does this cost them?
Well, and that's the hard part to figure out right now. It's all based on, obviously, the, whatever your EAV goes up for your property. What I will say is, our tax rate for the city is going down, and it has continued to go down over the last, you know, seven or eight years, which is a good thing. You want your tax rate to go down. So if, if your EAV didn't change at all from last year till this year, and your tax rate's going lower, your city portion of your taxes is actually going to go down. However, I know most people who have received their assessments will say otherwise. I think that a lot of people's estimates have gone up, but it's hard to know exactly what that dollar amount will be. When I did the figures last year, it's about a 5.1% increase in the, in the general, in the EAV, and you'd be looking at maybe about $10 to $11 per hundred dollar, per $100,000 of a home. Here again, these numbers were presented, if I can maybe help with Mr. Barerton's question, these numbers were presented as I normally would every year, using the formula, just so you could see what that increase would be if you so choose. And in talking to the city attorney, I believe you can still say yes to the announcement, even if this is not the number that you want to go with. I think that's what we were getting, is we need to approve the announcement, but we can change these numbers.
That's exactly correct. And when we do do the announcement, the actual levy amount for city and library must be read into the record, and a motion made to approve that estimated levy. What you do in 20 days, as far as increasing, decreasing, leaving alone, that's up to you. But tonight, the city does have to announce a levy.
Alderman Burt.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, Director Tobin, because I'll go ahead and vote yes for the announcement, but I'd like a little more time. I'm sure some others would too, to, to think about the rest.
Well, we got, we got some time that you can call and talk to Becky, or?
And I was going to say, I'll provide you with whatever, you know, if you'd want to see, you know, these are, this is a hard choice. I know COVID's got everybody in a, in a tough spot. I'm not, I've, I'm one that doesn't like to not increase the levy. If we do this again for the third year in a row, that comes out to, it's about $825,000 over three years that we are missing in revenue, if we did this for a third year. So, you know, those numbers start to become real numbers, but also understanding the difficult times, I can present all that information to you. Next week, you're also going to have your actuary here, and your fire and police pensions requesting their levy, which is about another $235,000 for next year, in addition to what we're paying in those pensions. So, you know, those are real numbers that we have to deal with as well, so.
So?
Alderman Snow has a question.
Alderman Snow, please proceed.
Okay, a couple things. A, so is this actual topic going to be on next week's agenda to discuss? I realize Becky's talking about different components of that, but is this topic going to be on the agenda? And the other thing to consider, well, there's a couple things. First off, every year we don't increase, we're, we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot. And I'm concerned that, you know, with the 2020 census, whether or not we wind up keeping home rules, and we may get saddled with never being able to recoup any of this money if things need to turn around to doing that. So, things to consider. So, that's all I have.
Becky?
If you want this on the agenda for next Monday, we can absolutely do that. We could go along with our discussion, you know, after the police and fire give their levy request.
Well, we have time before we have to present it for a final decision, correct, Becky?
Well, you have your first, your, your first reading is on December 7th, and I also have to publish, you know, your Truth in Taxation has to be published in the paper as well, before your public hearing, which is December 21st. So, I mean, we have a, and we also have a fifth Monday. So really, next Monday is your opportunity to?
Given the fact that you do have a fifth Monday, it should be on next Monday's agenda because things should go to committee before they go to council.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications? Hearing not all, entertain a motion to approve the estimated tax levy.
Mr. Mayor, it has not been read yet, so the number that we're actually estimating should be made a part of the motion.
I can do that. The motion is to approve the estimated tax levy of $5,854,144.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
No, we'll second.
I get a second by Alderman Stevens, and a third by Alderman Snow. Additional questions or comments about the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Barerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, we have our monthly expenditures, approval of expenditures, general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,473,270.46. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions or comments concerning any of the expenditures? Alderman Frank?
Yeah, it's pretty high that I was noticing, and I noticed that there were some heavy, larger amounts of transfers. Could you explain that to Becky?
We had a transfer to the capital fund for some equipment, and we also had, one of the largest expenses was we paid our liability insurance. If you recall, last month, we approved that large expenditure, so that's a big portion of this bill as well. And we also paid for the snow blower, which had been approved months ago, but was actually received and paid for. So, those are some big items for the month.
Something else?
Are there several liability expenses? Is there, are there more than just one? I think there's two.
There's two. You have the city portion, or the general fund portion was 400 and, I might have to find it. Let's see if I can page that one. The general fund portion was $450,495, and then the remaining balance is split between water and sewer. Water pays 16%, and sewer pays 19%.
Anything else, Alderman Frank? Additional questions or comments?
I have some questions.
Yes, Solomon Freeman, you now have the floor.
Thank you. So I was going to ask Attorney Drela, on page seven, there's three entries for Thomas, Thompson, Reuters, West. Is, I'm assuming that's a software subscription?
That's correct. I don't actually have the budget in front of me, but Thompson West or Reuters is actually a legal research software that I have to have with which to represent to you. It might be a little bit larger. They switched to paperless billing back in August, but didn't notify me. So we went three or four months where we hadn't paid them, and finally got an email from them to my account saying, "Hey, you haven't paid your bill." So it's a little bit higher than it usually is. I think it's right around $250 a month, or something like that, usually.
Yeah, the total is $750.81. So we got, we got in arrears too much.
Okay, and I think maybe these are for Becky. On, on pages 13, 20, 30, and 51, they're all for Physicians and Media Care, for COVID rapid tests, for the police, fire, and street department. I think last month, I asked about COVID tests that was on here, and it was part of a training protocol. But I'm wondering, I mean, the police one is over $4,000. So I'm wondering if these are all part of a training agenda, or are we testing our employees, and if this isn't covered by our insurance?
Yes, I can answer that. So we implemented a protocol for city employees. We entered into an agreement with Physicians and Media Care to provide the rapid test to the employees for those that were showing symptoms and needed to be tested immediately, and also for other employees that had been around that employee. Where we, it was really important to, to our staff to get those tests done as soon as possible, to try and stop the spread through some of our departments. So that's what you're seeing, and the city picked up those bills. So as long as they were, they were showing symptoms, they were around somebody else who was showing symptoms and had tested positive, or at the discretion of the department head, we allowed them to, to go to Physicians and Media Care and get that test, and it was billable to the city. This is all money that, through the Cures Grant, if we hadn't already received all the funding, we would have submitted this bill to be reimbursed. And I'm hopeful that there's going to be other funding opportunities out there, and that we'll be able to still get reimbursed for these expenses.
So you're looking at, this comes out of the $1,055?
I have one for, I believe, Chief Heiser. On page 20, we did our annual NFPA inspection, and I'm assuming that was all good?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, certainly it was. That was ladder 150. What happened with that is, well, yearly, NFPA 1911 has you go, take your ladder truck and go get its aerial ladder, and then also all ground ladders, and then the pump is inspected as well. So, yep, everything's passed.
Okay, perfect. My last one, I believe, is for KIP. I don't know if KIP's here, but it's page 33, and it has to do with the demolition and new windows on Nettie Street, and demolition. I don't know if this one, but the ones on Nettie Street, I'm assuming those will be reimbursed, reimbursed through the land bank? And then we did a demolition on Garfield Avenue?
All, yeah, KIP is here, by the way, but I said I could answer it. These are all expenses that are being reimbursed through our abandoned property program grant. We have to have that money spent. If you recall, we got a $40,000 grant pre-COVID, which kind of slowed down the process of us acquiring some of these properties. But as part of the grant, all this $26,696 will all be reimbursed.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions or comments on general fund expenses? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Oh, I have a motion and a second. Hearing no other further questions, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Barerton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
General and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,473,270.46 are approved unanimously, which then brings us to water and sewer funds. which then brings us to water and sewer fund expenditures of $656,245.82. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Sewer fund expenditures of $656,245.82 are approved unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Under number eight, please note that items A through I have been placed on file, which brings us to item J, which are the minutes of the committee of the whole building planning and zoning and public works of November 9th, 2020. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Clayton Stevens, Alderman Clayton Stevens, and a second by Alderman Arivolo. Additional questions or comments or proposed changes to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to item nine, unfinished business. Up first is item A, ordinance 508H, a second reading. It's an ordinance amending section 2-2, public comment of the city of Belvidere municipal code. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Burton, may I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
Could we get, this Alderman Snow, could we get somebody to explain to the audience exactly what we're changing?
Certainly. We're actually only changing two pertinent parts to increase the amount of time that each person may address the public body to five minutes. And also increasing the amount of time devoted to public comment in any one public meeting to 45 minutes in length.
Any other questions or comments or requests? Do I have a motion yet?
Yep.
Okay. Having a motion and a second, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item 10, new business. We have two first readings, which, for you folks at home, are silent readings, but I'll read them into the record so you'll know what they are. One is ordinance 509H. It's a first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings with respect to 953 Logan Avenue, which we have been able, unable to have a conversation with the homeowner that is amenable to him granting us access to a few feet of his property for the Logan Avenue Right-Away Project. And so we have to go into eminent domain proceedings. Item B is ordinance 510H, a first reading ordinance granting a zoning district change from SR 6, single-family residential, to six district, to I, institutional district 605 North State Street, which would be the Funderburg property, I believe. Is that still correct? Okay. Which changes what the zoning is on that, and that will come back for a final reading soon. Which then takes us to motions forwarded from the committee of the whole building planning and zoning and public works of November 9th, 2020. The motions will be presented by Chairman Brackliff. Chairman Brackliff, you have the floor.
Ladies and mayor, A, motion to renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield for nickel and self-funding for dental for calendar year 2021 and 2022.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Brackliff. Next up, we have motions of public works, which will be presented by Chairman Freeman. Chairman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. B, motion to approve the low bid from Jetco in the amount of $17,420 for the replacement of the expansion joint in the Southwest Tower riser pipe. This work will be paid for from Water Department Capital Fund, number 61-1780.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to item C.
C. C, motion to approve the change order to the Belvidere ponds contract for the construction of the asphalt milling's path base at a cost of $15.60 per square yard. The total estimated cost of this change order is $26,832 and will be paid for from the brownfield grant.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
I have a question.
Okay, Alderman Freeman, then Alderman Snow.
So this is our Kishawaki Riverfront Path Extension, correct?
Correct.
So my question is, we approved a motion back on August 7th, 2017, as some may remember, for an RFP, not to exceed $5,000 for the former National Sewing Machine Building with Gary Anderson Architects. I have a copy of their request for proposal for purchase and development of 400 Meadow Street, currently known as the old Leith Building. It's approximately 11.33 acres. The proposal's submittal deadline was December 8th, 2017. And apparently, we didn't have any takers on development. And this RFP was marketed extremely well. I think the fact that it's not located neither in a prominent residential or commercial slash retail neighborhood, and with Dean Foods, the neighbor right next door, was probably a major deterrent for investors. I could be mistaken, but I think the city acquired this property for a dollar years ago. My question, I guess, is, you know, since the property continues and will continue to deteriorate, I'd like to know what the plan is for that building, being how we're going to, we're going to build a path back there. And it looks like, I drove back there, and it looks like on the old, behind the old Leith, that's where we're dumping the dirt from the new retention pond at the BHS. So that's going to, you know, if the city keeps it, going to cost considerable landscaping. And with, you know, there's a whole bunch of Dean Foods trailers, old trailers parked back there. I don't know if it would be maybe feasible just to demo that building and donate it to the Park District to, you know, may in the future have more capital to work with than the city does to develop some type of park. You know, I'm afraid that just doing this path back there the way it is is going to attract some, you know, maybe riffraffy stuff that's going to maybe put a burden on our police department. So what, what is the plan for that building?
I can try and address that. Well, I'll have my, my finance director hat on, and then my historic preservation hat will sit next to me, and I'm just going to flip flop back and forth. You are correct, the building continues to fall onto disrepair. I think that was one of the big issues with the developers, that we did have come through the building, was the condition. Anytime you take an old structure and try and rehab it rather than tear it down and start from new, the costs are significant. That project was going to be about $20 million. I think we've continued to be hopeful that there would be someone, but I think even Gary Anderson, the last time he was in there, had said that at least that one section of the building really couldn't be saved. The newer section, and when I say new, I'm talking the 1920s portion of the building, could possibly be salvaged. It has a cement or concrete floor. But we did, we have received, at different points in time over the last decade or so, some costs on demoing that structure. And you're looking at anywhere from half a million to three quarters of a million, depending on the asbestos situation in the building. So I think that has been a discussion that we've had in-house and we've had with the mayor as to if that is the route to go, is how are we going to pay for the demolition of that property?
And I'll speak to that.
Well, I hate to see it demoed. It's, it's really a landmark here and pretty much the founding reason that Belvidere exists in the first place. But I think something needs to be done with it because, you know, putting a path behind it, you know, it's going to cost us a lot to landscape it like a park, just to have that, that building that's not attractive at all there. So I don't, you know, I don't know. I think we have to have a discussion on what, what our plan is actually for that land.
In, with your packets this time, I think there was a site plan that was provided for the Leith property. And I guess I'll take you back a little bit farther. We had to do a cleanup EPA. It was declared a brownfield through the EPA and qualified us for cleanup monies, cleanup funds. There was a revolving loan that was granted, oh, several years ago, probably more than 10 years ago, closer to 15 years ago. And that cleaned up the worst of the worst parts of it. And in conjunction with that cleanup, we are required to put a cap on that property. Because it's in the flood, part of that property is in the floodway, we cannot just put a, when you think of a cap, putting new clean dirt over the top of it and being done, we couldn't do that. We had to actually excavate out the quote-unquote "the bad dirt," spoiled material, and take that to a landfill. It was the appropriate place we had to take that to. So that was done as part of the grant that, the revolving loan grant that we got that basically, basically became a grant from DCEO in the amount of $310,000. So that $310,000 is being spent on installing that cap. Fortunately, good news for, for us and the city is the pond projects came along, and that provided us with the cap, a source of cap material that we didn't have to pay for. Well, we did have to pay for, but it was cheaper, made the pond projects cheaper because we could use that material on the brownfield site to do that cap. So what you saw when you drove back there is that's, that's what's in process now. We had to put a liner down, and we had to put an 18-inch clean soil cap over the top. And once that's done, then it'll be, we will have that seeded down. It's going to be a mixture of prairie mixes, pollinator mixes, native grass species. For hopefully, so in the future, it'll be a low maintenance until such time as that property is redeveloped. The path that we're, that's the subject of this motion tonight is actually considered part of the cap. And that's why, not, if you noticed or not, but the two main foundations of the old Moline Company Foundry are still in place, and that is because they are serving as a cap to that property. So between the liner, between the clean soil fill, the concrete foundation, and this path extension that we're doing is all included in that cap design with the goal of getting a no further remediation letter from the Illinois EPA. And once we have that, that is something that can be provided to the developers so that when the developers go in to redevelop that site, whatever part of the cap they disturb as a part of their project, they need to reestablish that cap, whether it's still with a clean fill or hard surface or what have you, but there will still be that cap integrity. So again, all this work that we're talking about, that cap work, the seeding work that you referenced, this base material that we're talking about now, all that's going to be paid for by that $310,000 grant that we received to do this work.
And Marcia, to give you a little bit of history, when I was first elected mayor, I wanted to tear it down, and at that time, it was about $245,000 to tear it down by Northern Illinois Services. It's three times that now. A couple of things, we have, we still have one group that is trying to pursue finding financing for a project. They're quickly running out of time. I agree with you, it needs to be taken down. As far as the Park District, Park District doesn't have the money to develop that property. They have other issues right now about providing a pool. We had a discussion probably seven years ago about doing a full community project to put an auditorium or swimming facility down there, which would have required tearing that building down. I was not a popular person when I proposed tearing that down because it does have a significant history. We've had three groups that have looked at it, two that talked to us for a year and a half that we thought might go someplace, and they decided they weren't really going to be able to turn that into a hotel for a reasonable amount of price. Then we had, went out to the RFP, as you noted, and we had six groups in the room that came to take a look and offer some ideas. As I said, we still have one group that is talking about it. But that property cleaned off, and please understand that we used the one end of that for storage. And if that building were to be totally taken down, we have to build a new storage facility somewhere for impound and for overflow to park our trucks from public works and other departments in the city. So by the time you're said and done doing all of those kinds of things, now, now you've got the cost of taking it down. Then you've got the cost of building a new building. And we've discussed that and designed a couple of thoughts about the building and what size it needs to be, and we know where it might go on the property across from the existing water treatment plant that we own. So as far as currently, what we've been discussing is, once that path is in place, we're going to plant grass and flowers down there and make it seem at least a little bit walkable for people and do a couple of other things with the block building. If indeed, the group that is now still trying to raise the finance to do a project there cannot do that, we will have to have a very serious talk about taking down the building and doing some kind of a monument to the National Sewing Machine Company, using materials from that building, because it is an important part of our history. But to let it just sit there every year, you're right. It gets worse and worse. One end of the building absolutely needs to be torn down. But I think it's going to have to be a serious conversation in the next couple of years, and we'll have to plan for the expense if indeed that's what we're going to do. But you make some good points, and thank you. So back to, back to the motion on the floor, all those in favor...
Snow had some more questions.
Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So Brett, you had mentioned that concrete slab from the old building. So is that a relatively smooth thing, or is that a relatively uneven structure as it sits right now?
It's relatively smooth. There are portions that are uneven, but our plan is to get that smoothed over and at least be usable going forward.
And, and so off of the main path, there looks like there's some kind of hatching that could be more path going to that concrete? Is that, um, part of this bid that we're looking at right now?
Yes, you're, you're correct. There, there's, uh, the path that goes to the backside to the riverside of the foundation, and then there's a offshoot that goes to the center of that foundation, and that offshoot is included in the work that's before you tonight.
Thank you.
Additional questions and comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Arivolo.
Will this path be big enough for a vehicle to drive through, just in case we need to get to there?
It'll be ten foot wide.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, the motion now on the floor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to the last motion of the evening. Please proceed. Item D. Marcia?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. The motion to approve the proposal from CES Inc. in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents to complete the preliminary engineering for the Fifth Avenue project. This work will be paid for from capital funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Brackliff?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo may have a second.
A second.
Second by Alderman Stevens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, we are now adjourned.